Everyone, and thank you all so much for attending. Today is May the 3rd, and we have another one of our wonderful budget wishlist sessions to discuss funding requests from council members. So, thank you for everyone who may be tuning in, and thank you to my colleagues who are here. We are going to pick right up where we left off on yesterday. So colleagues, we are on page nine of 21. I do anticipate that we will finish our wishlist today. So, starting with our Human Relations Commission, we do have multiple requests for $514,350 for MHRC, and those requests are coming from the Immigrant Caucus, Councilmember Voe, the Minority Caucus, Councilmember Tooms, Councilmember Harrell, Councilmember Coopin, and Councilmember Soror. And those are for staffing and salary adjustments. We do have additional requests from Evans and Evans, Kimbrough, and Stiles. We will address those separately since they are for a different amount. So would anyone who has the $514K, would you all like to speak on this request?
I would like to, I just thought that's what they asked for, was the 200. But if they need more, I'm all for the change mine to $514,350.
Okay.
Thank you.
Duly noted. All right, would anybody like to speak on their request?
I could speak to it, Chair. So, it's for three staff getting their salaries up and programming. There's a couple of things that we are specifically trying to figure out with that department. As far as the Immigrant Caucus note goes, there's language equity that we've been working on with that department. They've been doing a study with various metro departments to figure out what their plan is, to reach out to non-English speakers. And so, they really do need more staff, and that's why it's become one of our priorities.
Okay, thank you so very much. Would anybody else like to speak to that request? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and, oh, okay. We'll go ahead and go to Councilmember Evans. We have a request for $146,650 for salary adjustments and programming. Councilmember Evans, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, in looking at their itemized funding increase requests, I had taken the $95,000 for current staff reclassifications, and then the $51,650 for programming, and came up with the number, I would be supportive of more if it's possible.
Okay. Thank you so very much. Anyone else want to talk about that? All right, Council Lady Kimbrough, I got you in with the other bunch. And then we have Council Lady Stiles for $65,000 for a Title VI position. My assumption is that Title VI may be included in the $514 that we've heard from other individuals, but I'm not sure. Do you think it is?
I think so.
Okay. Council Lady Stiles did send a letter. Let's see what it is. Her letter is, just kidding. Council Lady Campbell sent the letter, but this is in reference to parks, so I will come back to that. All right, I think that wraps us up for the Human Relations Comis-, oh, just kidding. Back page of Human Relations Commission. We have $85,000, oh, no, that's Human Resources. So, we are done with Human Relations Commission, everybody. My apologies. So, going on to Human Resources, we have a request of $85,000 from Evans Segal, the Immigrant Caucus, Voe, and Allen, and this is for a school board raise study in personal, maybe this is supposed to be personnel development or personal development, and then a pay plan study on raising the board member's salary, and then funding for mandatory trainings. So, it was $40,000 to study raising the salary of our school board members, and then $45 to support their mandatory training. So, would anyone like to speak to that? Council Lady Evans Segal, and then Council Lady Allen.
So, I think it was clear this is the first step for the increase in the salary for teachers, and I think actually we will cover to the school board, a bunch of other members have the same request. List of the Minority Caucus, Tooms, Harrell, Soror, Welch, and the Women's Caucus all also have the same request, just in a different bucket. So, I think, it sounds like it has to start with Human Resources, and the question is, should the money go there for the study, or should it go to the school board, who then would enter into an agreement with Human Resources to do it? And it sounds like Human Resources has it on their to-do list, and we need to fund it either this year or next year, is what it sounded like from those conversations, to make sure that for the next term, we could potentially apply it for, that it is ready to go.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Allen?
I would just add to that, it's still not totally clear to me whether money is needed or if it's there or not, but I think we're safer putting it there. And clearly, the school board makes $14,000. We're making twice as much, and I know they work really hard. So, I would love to see the study happen. I would love to get more clarity on if there are other ways that that will be paid for, and maybe somebody on the back table can speak to that. I don't know. Does anyone know if there is money that can be used for that that's already in a budget?
I will say this, in the conversations we had with the MMPS board members, the recommendation was to see if they had, as they get closer to the end of the year, across their budget, they had $20,000 or something like that set aside, which I think Shannon was saying if that would, or HR Director was seeing if that would
Right.
...fit at least an initial sort of peer review, and a few tins of colas that have occurred since it was last set, and at least accelerated that, and then compared that to some initial peers, that could probably be at least a preliminary study.
Okay. So, we may have more information when it comes time to prioritizing, but I think the study absolutely needs to happen, and I hope we can get more specificity on exactly how much of this funding is needed to make that happen.
Awesome, thank you so much. I know we also discussed in the Women's Caucus possibly doing some legislation that would align every time we study the council salary, we're also studying the school board salaries. It is my understanding that they've not had an increase maybe since 2014 or...
The last time we did.
We have one since 2014. They haven't had one in...
Yeah, this year, one's starting this year.
Yeah, we have one starting this year. We still only make $23,000. No worries, guys, no worries, right? But they had not had an increase in just such a long period of time. Forgive me, I don't remember the year, but it may have been like 2006, or '08, or '14, but it was extremely a long time ago. So, we just want to make sure that as we're looking at making sure that council pay is equitable, we're also looking at our school board to make sure that their pay is equitable as well. Anything else on those requests? The other portion of the request was also because they have mandatory trainings, so it is setting aside some money to help reimburse them for some of those trainings, so if they have to, you know, travel or pay registration fees for conferences, to make sure that they are not having to come completely out of pocket for that. So, that is part of the request as well. Any other, any questions, comments? All right, moving right along. The next request is for $100,000, just from Councilmember Hancock. That's to add one Veterans Service Officer to HR. Does anyone have any information about that? Okay. All right, well, thank you so much. That concludes HR. Now, we'll go to the library. The first request we have is for a Safety Inspector from libraries. That is $99,300. And we have Councilmember Evans, Councilmember Ewing, Councilmember Welch, and Stiles. That's it for that, just that one particular position. Evans Segal and Soror have a different position, so we will come back to that. Would any of you all like to talk about the Safety Inspector position?
I didn't request that. That was the one that was, I think, transposed potentially from you, or some, Evans Segal, or somebody else, but that's not on my wishlist.
All right, crossed off. Would anyone like to speak on additional funding for a new security officer at the library? All right, seeing none, moving right along. Council Lady Evans Segal, we have a million-dollar request for additional needed funding for Safety Coordinator, and for additional staff and funding for circulation efforts.
Yeah, so I think it was pretty clear in the library hearing that they are facing really increased costs. And I think if we look back at, you know, things that really affected quality of life during the pandemic, libraries being closed was one of them. Access to books, whether you can get there in person or online at home, is really important for community members of all ages and abilities. Being able to make sure we keep the libraries open for those that don't have tech services at home is really critical. And it did sound like in that hearing that they could really use that extra support, especially given the increased costs they're facing on their electronic systems, in addition to the Safety Inspector, which I really think they need, which is included in that million. And just making sure again that they have staff and keep those doors open, because we know when those doors were closed during the pandemic, and for a long time after, that was really, really hard on the community.
Thank you, Council Lady. Do we know, is the million-dollar request, is that, is that the amount that they actually need, or is that you kind of rounding some stuff together?
I mean, I think she made it clear that they needed a few million, and so this doesn't get them there, but this is something to help get to some of that money that they need for this year, so we can look at over the term, getting closer to where they need to be for their staffing and resources needs.
Thank you.
Chair Porter, sorry. The books and materials, including the electronic ones, are usually done out of the 4% fund, and so, much like our other kinds of equipment and materials, we usually have about $300 million worth of requests for about $50 million a year of 4% money. I will always advocate for us to think about whether or not that 4% fund is adequately funded, but that is specifically what has been the challenge for their circulation materials. And in the last administration, I think, in that struggle of making trade-offs, those trade-offs were made by council to reduce the 4% fund, such that specific examples where libraries would be impacted, and that was an accepted trade-off from a prior council body.
Are we allowed to do it out of the budget if we know the 4% isn't enough, or does it have to be 4%?
I'll look to Margaret. For things like books and materials, those could be paid for out of operating budget. Things like building repairs and whatnot, those are, we really want to stick to 4% cap on.
Yeah, those are truly capital expenses. Right, okay.
Thanks.
Do you want to keep your request at a minute?
I do want to keep it there, because I do think they clearly need it. They're clearly, it feels like going through a lot of money on that Libby system, but it's also hugely popular and wonderful for those who can't get the library itself.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else want to speak on that? Council Lady Kimbrough?
I did not put anything here, and I guess I didn't even think about the library. But I'd like for you to add me to that if that's possible, because I was just so impressed with my tour of the library, especially the downtown, and what they have for the kids, what they have, what they have for everyone, for everyone. I was impressed by the things you can check out, even cooking pan or something, just, I was just impressed. I have more appreciation now for my local library. I just didn't know they had all that they have. They've been very accommodating, allowing us to have meetings, and just, I am just so impressed by the library. So, and they're there for everyone, and I appreciate that, no matter what walk or light, no matter where you are, for that reason, and for the same amount of fees, just for my name. Thank you.
Duly noted. I will add you for the record for today's conversation, and then just also make sure you put on your updated wishlist due on June the 6th. All right, Metro Action Commission, we have a $50,000 request for MAC, for Music City Construction Careers, and that is from the Immigrant Caucus, Councilmember Voe, Councilwoman Sepulveda. They all make that request. So, would anyone like to speak to that? Yes?
Thank you, Chair. So, the Music City Construction Careers, we funded in the previous two budgets, I think, if I'm correct. And there is currently $50,000 for it in MAC, for MAC, but it does not specify Music City Construction Career. So, we want to specify that. It's what we've done, that amount is what we did last year. We just want to stay consistent, so it was recommended that we specifically name the organization. And so, for those that aren't familiar, MC3 does pre-apprenticeship programs, and various building trades participate in it. It's a couple of weeks. They learn various different things, blueprints, they do math, different things, and then at the end, they decide which building trade to go into. And then they immediately start their apprenticeship program. It's paid, and so, we know that nowadays, not everyone is taking the traditional route to go to universities, and so, a lot of younger people have been able to, you know, filter into this program, and even some older adults who want a career change have started participating as well. And so, it would be my recommendation that we specifically say that the $50,000 that's currently in there for MAC go to MC3.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this program? All right, Council Lady Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm just in support of this, and this is great, because it's not a request for more money, it's just making sure that this great program that we have continues in the MAC budget. It's just earmarked for the MC3.
Thank you, Council Lady Voe. Anyone else? All right, we will move right along. The next one is for $200,000 for the United Way Countywide Access to Childcare Research Study, and that is Councilmember Campbell, Councilwoman Soror, Councilwoman Welch, various members of the Women's Caucus, and Councilwoman Allen. Council Lady Allen, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, I would like to do that. The Women's Caucus, and many of us, have been just aware of the importance of high-quality childcare, which is really high-quality early childhood education, and it makes everything that happens from there on out in school work better if we get that, if we make that happen. And COVID devastated what, you know, what limited childcare infrastructure we had, so just trying to do what we can to understand what the obstacles are. Some of those have to do with zoning and regulation requirements, both at the metro and at the state level, and a lot of it has to do with just retention of teachers, which is a function of pay and things like that, and families can't afford to pay the salaries, I mean, the fees that make it able to pay the salary. So, this is an issue affecting employers everywhere, because if your employees can't find a place for their children to be during the day, then they can't work. And I've chatted with some of the folks that are doing the research. I said, you know, I want to make sure that ultimately, the end result of this research is that we have more childcare facilities, because we can study this all day long, but we'll just actually drive that to happen. And their understanding, having studied this, is that there are a lot of corporations with a lot of funding that know this is a problem, that want to help fix it, but they don't know how. And this research will help give them some very specifics on, here's how you can do it, here are great models in other places, and here's the funding that we need to attract the high-quality teachers that will make this work. So, I think spending in here will save us, like so many things, on jail farther down the road, and it's money well redirected.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate that. Would anyone else like to speak to that? Council Lady Evans.
My recollection from the presentation is that this contribution, we would not be the only contributors to this study. We would be one of several that would be contributing, and so, I thought everything that Councilmember Allen, and then also that we're not the only person funding it. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak on it? All right, moving right along. The Municipal Auditorium, we have a $250,000 request from Councilmember Cortez for Municipal Auditorium Feasibility Study. And then we also have that same request from Councilwoman Stiles for $379,000 for feasibility study. Councilmember Coopin, would you like to be recognized?
Thank you, Chair. I'd love to speak on this as the outrams in my district, at least where we are right now. I did not put this originally on, but I do intend to add it to my amended wishlist. We've been, we've got a group that is interested in working with the city on potentially managing and renovating the space, but whether or not that particular deal comes to pass or not, it's a space that's used for graduations, and for community events, and concerts, and has been long kind of pushed to the side. And the way, we're constantly underway maintenance costs of that building, so the way to move forward and to get out of that cycle of maintenance costs would be a feasibility study. I'm not 100% sure if the 250 or 379 number is exactly the right one, but I will get that for the amended wishlist, but I do believe it'd be important to look at for the allocation of funding in general, and then with this potential deal on the table as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Coopin. Any chance that people that are interested in renovating and partnering can pay for it or go in on it?
So, that would be the idea, is that the potential deal would be that they would be willing to pay for renovations in exchange for managing the space. They've kind of presented before the Public Facilities Apple Committee before, and so, it would be an exchange of us doing a feasibility study, and then them coming in and renovating the building.
Thank you so very much. Council Lady Voe, and then Council Lady Evans Segal.
Thank you so much, Chair. I can confirm that the feasibility study is a $379,000 request, and then the partner that is interested, they would be covering around $10 million in renovations for municipal, and they have, you know, had provided some examples of other renovations they did in Alabama. That's a similar venue, and so, I would support this feasibility study, so that we can address and improve municipal, since it is used for so many various events, community and wider.
Thank you so much. Council Lady Evans Segal, and then Council Lady Allen.
I just have two questions. So, typically, your buyer would cover any feasibility studies, or your user, or your lessee, so I'm just sort of curious why we have to pay for a feasibility study that's typically put on the party that will make money off of something, for one, and then two, is the auditorium like a separate public corporation? Is it a part of the government? Like, how's it structured? Does it keep its own money to itself? Like, how does, what is that relationship? I'm looking at the two people, I think. I can't see the third who would know.
Enterprise fund. So, it keeps the fund balanced, as well as, but it is part of our government, it's a operating department. Not knowing the specifics of this arrangement, I just, I don't, I was just asking, I don't know if something like that would need a procurement, if that's not a non-profident entity, not knowing.
Yeah, it is a process.
It probably would, and it's something that municipal would procure, so it probably would need to go through a procurement process to get a feasibility study, but funding is a, you know...
Or the whole relationship, rather, is what I was suggesting.
Council Lady Allen, and then we'll go to Councilwoman...
Okay, and then another question, just to ensure, and I know that there's, way down the line, there is hope that we will at some point have a women's special sports team, possibly, one that would work inside, like a national basketball association or something, and that that might be a venue where they could play. I just want to be sure that the feasibility study would be looking at uses that would be compatible with that possibility.
Councilwoman Coopin?
Thank you, Chair. I can address, I think, a couple of those questions. Councilwoman Evans Segal, I shared that question, as someone who works in residential real estate, I was like, we usually have the buyer pay for their home inspection. And I actually did share that back with the group, and have been in some discussion with them, saying, you know, hey, maybe you pay for that. I think those are very early-stage discussions, as far as where that goes, does that go, where does that happen? They've opened a number of really phenomenal venues around the country, so potentially a really cool partner, but I shared that same question as to why would we pay for it, if we wanted, if you're interested. But it did, and to Councilwoman Allen's question, I know I've heard about the WNBA possibility as well, so that's kind of what brought, originally, I actually didn't add it because of some of those reasons, and then realized that in order to move forward with WNBA, or music venue, or whatever, we would need to have that feasibility study done in some capacity. I don't know the specifics of this one, but I believe it would go to the Auditorium Commission to run that study, and see what the best use is, and then it would most likely go to a procurement status.
What, is there a timeframe of, you know, is there a time that this, I don't want to say deal, because I don't feel like we're at that stage of it, but I'm wondering if this will be better looked at next budget, when we do have a little more flexibility, as opposed to looking at it for this budget, and also trying to figure out all those things with regards to like procurement, and who's paying for the study, and all of those things? So, any thoughts on this happening next year, or being suggested for next year?
I would say, if I could look in a little more deeply to some of those questions, and see for the amended discussions, I think it's a fair point. I go both ways. On the one hand, we want to start doing something now, because if we do have an opportunity like this venue coming through, or NBA team, we don't want to be caught behind the eight ball and not have enough time to get the study and know what we're doing, or if the building starts to really deteriorate, but at the same time, I recognize that we have some tough decisions to make as far as budget goes, and so, I think it's a great question.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to page 12 for the Music and Entertainment Commission. We have $150,000, and that is from the Immigrant Caucus, Councilmember Voe, Councilmember Cortez, Councilwoman Ewing, Councilwoman Coopin, Councilwoman Welch, and members of the Women's Caucus. They all seem to be around hiring an executive director, possibly an ED and support staff and software for $150,000. Is there anyone that would like to speak to that? Council Lady Voe?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, with the Music Film and Entertainment Commission, with the budget they have currently, they were unable to hire anyone, and so, with this request, it is so then to actually start the commission and have staff, which is why the request for the ED and support staff with the additional, with the $150, adding to what they already have.
Thank you. So, they have a budget, they were not able to get an ED with the budget? Is it that the budget was too small?
Correct, yes, the budget was too small. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was only $100,000, so they were unable to successfully get anyone, and with this additional $150, they're hoping that they can have to staff two people, and then get the software that they need, so they can integrate with other cities and across the state. They use this type of software for film and television and music.
Thank you. Would anybody just like to speak to it? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move right along to NDOT. Councilmember Coopin, traffic calming, $4 million.
Hey, since we've got so much surplus funds, it's gonna be an easy one to just slip in.
My God, on today. All right, Councilwoman Coopin, you're recognized.
We had all this extra money, right? No, this was, this was, again, more of a symbolic gesture, because I know traffic calming was really an important effort, but then I have since learned that there is some funding in the Vision Zero budget that they're looking at allocating for traffic calming. And obviously, I recognize that we're not getting $4 million for this right now, and as many other really important priorities, but I do think it's a really important thing to keep prioritization of, about six months ago, there was an accident on my street, which does not have traffic calming measures at this time, where someone was speeding, hit a parked car, spun out, and almost slammed into me as I was backing out, so I was a few seconds away from being badly injured or worse, and I know many of my constituents feel the same way, so just want to continue to advocate for prioritizing funding for traffic calming projects where we can, recognizing that there's a lot of other priorities as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Coopin. So, since you do now have the information that it is being funded through Vision Zero, are you wanting to keep this on your wishlist, or are you letting it go?
I think we let this one go.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. All right, on to the Office of Family Safety, page 13. See how quickly we're moving through this? Look at you all. Keep moving, right? All right, Office of Family Safety, for $75,000, we have the Safe Bar Mobile App and Drug Testing Supplies, and that request came in from the Immigrant Caucus, from Councilmember Evans, from Councilmember Ewing, from Councilmember Campbell, from Councilwoman Soror, Councilwoman Webb, Councilwoman Weiner, Councilwoman Welch, various members of the Women's Caucus, and Councilwoman Allen. Would anyone like to speak to that? Would anyone like to speak to that?
May I can kick us off?
All right.
So Safe Bar, you know, we were able to fund it for $75,000 last year through the Sexual Assault Center. And Sexual Assault Center come to the Women's Caucus to speak on the challenges that they were having with expanding the Safe Bar training program, which creates opportunities within the entertainment communities in downtown, but also in other parts of Davidson County to train bar and restaurant employees on how to recognize issues around potential sexual assault in those locations and then how to respond to those. And then also provides these really cool little, they call them coasters, but, you know, ways for people to be able to test their drinks to see if they've been adulterated. And so that's been kind of a, a challenge in our tourist-heavy economy, looking for opportunities to make people safe. So this is a program that has had a lot of success. It had, I can't remember off the top of my head how many trainings they were able to expand as a result of our investment and then that collaboration with McDonough. And then, of course, Councilmember Coopin and Stiles and others to be able to go out and train more people. And so they, they really though need to get to the point where they have their app fully built out and you can identify, here's all the places that are Safe Bar certified. And so that is part of the goal of that $75,000.
Thank you, Council Lady Evans. I definitely think that that is very, very important for us. Would anyone else like to speak to that? All right, seeing none, I did want to add, Councilwoman Gad was also a part of that. Her request was for $100,000, but it is for the same thing. It's for Safe Bar as well as drug testing supplies. Council Lady Evans, $120,000 for continued therapist access for survivors of domestic violence to the Mary Parish Center.
Yeah, so this is an example of one of the areas where the COVID ARP funding, where there's a cliff situation through the Office of Family Safety. So as part of COVID funding, we were able to provide funding for the Office of Family Safety through the Mary Parish Center to have a therapist that was assigned to the Office of Family Safety to be able to support residents who were victims of domestic violence. And so their funding, my understanding is, it will be ending during this fiscal year. And so their request was, is there opportunity to extend this funding? Because otherwise, they will not be able to support having a therapist specifically for the Office of Family Safety.
Thank you so very much. Would this go directly to the Mary, Mary Parish Center or would it go to the Office of Family Safety?
My understanding, I believe it goes to the Office of Family Safety as like the pass-through.
Pass-through to go to Mary Parish.
And then, and then Mary Parish pays that therapist directly.
Okay, thank you, Council Lady Evans. If anyone who, that may not be familiar with the Mary Parish Center, they provide wonderful resources for victims of domestic violence. They actually provide housing for individuals, I believe it's for two years, independent housing to allow victims of domestic violence to get back on their feet so that if they do, if they are leaving an unsafe situation, it does, they do provide that housing and support and wraparound services to help them get back on their feet and become independent again. So definitely appreciate the, the work that they do. Would anyone else like to speak to that? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item. We have $700,000 from Councilmember Gad, fully restore the loss of ARPA funds to the Office of Family Safety, ARPA funding to serve high-risk clients through case management and to help alleviate weight and bliss for survivors of interpersonal violence seeking therapy through their nonprofit partners. Does anyone have any information on that?
My, the only thing that, as I was looking at this specifically, is that Councilmember Gad looked like she was funding everything that was flowing through the Office of Family Safety, because there are other providers that provide, you know, support through that office. And so that's, that was just me going back and looking at some of the ARP funding that we did last term related to that, and I have not spoken to Councilmember Gad directly.
Thank you so very much. Anyone else want to add to that, y'all? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on. The next item, oh, Council Lady Voe.
Sorry, Chair.
I just want to clarify, because immigrant caucuses, but twice, I think I'm supposed to be the second one, so just clerically, so that I support.
Perfect.
That as well, thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. We have Councilmember Harrell. This is for the United Way Childcare Study. As we discussed yesterday, some items end up in the wrong spot if someone puts the, a different name. So we have already discussed the childcare study, so we will go ahead and move along. Now we are on page 15, Parks. I will read a letter from Council Lady Campbell. "Chair, I regret that, I regret that I'm unable to attend the budget work session today due to a schedule conflict." I'm paraphrasing, y'all, I'm reading the short, I'm skimming through here. "This letter is to express my support of the budget wishlist item to allocate $250,000 to Metro Parks to partner with community organizations to offer educational, athletic, and vocational programming at neighborhood community centers in areas with high incidence of crime. This initiative is proposed to address the root cause of youth crime and increase community safety. I'm proposing that Metro Nashville provide grants to selected community organizations to scale work that they're already doing in the community to mentor, educate, and engage youth to improve programmatic offerings at neighborhood community centers. The funding will be used in a similar way as initiated by Governor Bill Lee, where it's allocated $100 million in the 2024 Tennessee State Budget for local law enforcement agencies to implement evidence-based programs, technology, and strategies to reduce violent crime in our communities. MMPD has received $3 million out of the 100 million to focus on programs in the 37207 area. Part of MMPD's strategy is to partner with community organizations to provide youth programming at the Parkwood Community Center located in 37207. Also, I would like to support, express my support for the Minority Caucus wishlist item to allocate $65,000 to Metro Parks to support a restorative justice pilot program at the Napier Community Center. Thank you for your consideration, including my letter of, of support for the record during today's budget work session." So I just wanted to make sure to get that in on the record, since Council Lady Campbell could not be here. The first item we have going to Parks is for the Varsity Spending Plan. We do have $75,000 from the Immigrant Caucus. We have Councilmember Voe. We have $65,000 from the Minority Caucus. It's the, it is the same proposal, it's just listed as different amounts. Council Lady Toons has it at $65,000. We have Council Lady Evans at $2 million. So Council Lady will let you come in and speak to that after we speak on the first part of it. The Varsity Spending Plan, $100,000 from Councilmember Harrell. Varsity Spending Plan, $200,000 from Councilmember Kimbrough. Varsity Spending Plan Restorative Justice, $65,000 from Council Lady Swora. $200,000 from Council Lady Welsh for the Varsity Spending Plan. And that is it for the Varsity Spending Plan. So would anyone like to speak to that item? And if not, I can speak to it. I'll kick us off.
You can still, but I, I want to change mine to match the $2 million that Council Lady Evans did.
Okay. All right, so the Varsity Spending Plan, and we actually have individuals here with us, so thank y'all for joining us from Southern Movement here with us today. So the, the Varsity Spending Plan is broken up into three different parts. One part is working with Parks to do restorative justice through community centers. There's one part that is working with schools to do restorative justice, and then one part that is doing an Office of Youth Safety within the mayor's office to address youth, gun violence, I believe it's also restorative justice, or restorative justice and alternative forms of, alternative forms of policing, I believe. So I know this proposal has received a lot of support. It is my understanding, and we did get this from Director Monique Odom from Parks, that Director Odom is willing to do a pilot in one of the community centers. I made the recommendation that we look at Napier, but that is just a, a recommendation. I've not talked to Director Odom about if we want to pilot this at Napier. I've not talked to Southern Movement yet about if they want to, if they, you know, their thoughts on partnering with Napier. But as we know, like, just, it was just recently came out in the media that there have been four shootings in four days. We want to try to provide as much support as possible in communities, especially in underserved communities. So Director Odom has stated that she's willing to do the one-year pilot. The cost that was given to us, my understanding for that one-year pilot is $75,000. So I believe that is why multiple people kind of have that, that request number. But I'm going to open it up for other people to talk about it. And then Council Lady Evans will go to you and so that you could talk about the $2 million request.
No, Chair.
Chair was asking a question.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I fully support this. And, you know, if possible, if we are able to increase the amount and pilot at several other community centers as well, I would support that. And, you know, with the shootings happening in my district and with the elementary school right next to the community center, I think that it is really critical for us to focus in Napier, so I, I fully support that. And think that this is a great plan and focusing on restorative justice and focusing on our youth. And I care very much about that and would increase it if we are able to do that.
Thank you, Council Lady Voe. Would anybody else like to speak? Council Lady Sepulveda?
Yeah, I'm in support of having the pilot in Napier. I think it's, it's vitally important. It's also a discussion that we have when it comes to budget, right? Other forms of public safety, and we don't invest enough in our, in our neighborhoods and providing a place for, for kids to go that's safe, that's free, that's enjoyable. And so if we could pilot this at Napier, I think that would be ideal. And hopefully, we could consider it for years to come at, at different community centers.
Thank you, Council Lady Sepulveda. Councilmember Coopin?
I would like to speak in support of this as well. I know I'm not listed on here, but plan to add it. When I was campaigning, one of the number one things that came to me, especially in the public housing areas, were, were, you know, things to do for the kids, things to do for the community, and especially as we're going into the summer season. I think back to last summer when I had lots of conversations with parents that said, you know, please, let's, let's do something for, for our community. And I think as Councilman Sepulveda said, we, we invest quite a bit in, in certain public safety areas, and it's really important to invest in our neighborhoods and our communities. And I think this is a great program and a great way to invest in our neighborhoods. And, you know, I think starting at Napier is a great idea and just really supportive of this effort.
Thank you so much. And I did, I pulled up from the website, it's, the, the community request was for $4 million to increase community center program and a restorative justice person on staff at community centers located in areas impacted by harm and the criminal legal system. So the original ask was for $4 million. When we talked to Director Odom, Director Odom is saying she's willing to pilot at one center to start off, which is how we got to where we are with the request. So if we do, if we are able to get to a higher request, we would just need to make sure that Director Odom has the capacity to expand it past one. But from what she has shared with us and what she shared in the Parks budget hearing, she has, she is committed to one. So that's just something that we need to keep in mind. Council Lady Evans, did you want to speak on it?
Yeah, sure. So I, I included a higher amount specifically because I thought if we, if we could swing it, to do it in more locations would be ideal to the point about capacity. Obviously, that's, that's going to be a concern. So, but I think ultimately, like, this is one of those that we need to have a conversation about, and it aligns with other kind of more community safety-oriented requests. Like, how are we not only, you know, appropriately having MMPD funded also? But this is like a yes and, like, we need to keep pushing on some of these things from a systems perspective. And I thought that this particular request really aligned well with Councilmember Swora's youth and government session, because there were students there that specifically talked about, you know, community centers and, and programming at those centers. And other countries are already doing this kind of work in community centers, like in Iceland. That's, that's like a second home for kids to go to, and their hours are expanded, in some cases on the weekends, you know, they're open all night, those kinds of things. So there's a lot of opportunity. And so I thought this was a good way to kind of put that focus in probably the most tangible of the pillars that were shared that we can take action on.
Thank you, Council Lady Evans. I also want to make sure that, just so that my intent is clear, the other portion of this that I would love to see is the Office of Youth Safety. And there's been, you know, we're having conversations about, does that make more sense to be located in the mayor's office? Does it make more sense to be located under Health? Or where, where exactly could that program live? But if we could also possibly pilot the Office of Youth Safety this year, I think it is extremely important that we're addressing gun violence. And, I mean, as we saw last night, unfortunately, a teenager was killed in Bellevue, a sibling was also shot, and, and this crime happened by a child, by another child. So this is something that we definitely have to make as many investments as we can to try to proactively support our youth so that they are not getting into situations that, that could potentially take a lifetime to get out of, or unfortunately, for, for some youth that, you know, will never be able to see their families again because of, either because they are the victim of crime or because they committed the crime. So I do want to just get that on the record, that I'm also looking at if we could pilot the Office of Youth Safety and what that would look like. As I shared with you all already, I did not do a wish list, since the substitute budget is kind of my wish list, but I did want to make sure that that was out there for the record as well as we were having this conversation. Do we have any other conversation on Varsity Spending Plan? All right. Thank you. The next item we have is community center program grants for $250,000. That was Council Lady Campbell, and that was the letter that I just read to you all. Did anyone want to speak on, on that request? All right, moving on. So Councilmember Harrell's request was for $100,000 for the Varsity Spending Plan, but that was a part of the conversation we just had. Council Lady Kimbrough, you're, we have your request documented for $2 million. And we have $200,000 request from Council Lady Welsh, again, also part of Varsity Spending Plan, so that was incorporated in that conversation. All right, seeing no additional requests, we'll move on to the Planning Department, page 16. Council Lady Evan Segal, $250,000 to begin the Pattern Book Study. And Councilmember Horton also has that for $500,000 for the Pattern Book Study. So Council Lady Evan Segal, would you like to kick off that conversation?
Yeah, so we passed a resolution as a body overwhelmingly to support the sort of step asked of us in National Next to do a pattern book. And we asked that planning come back to us and tell us how much that would cost and take next steps. Planning said that that would cost $500,000, but it did not make it in the budget. My, the, I think Councilmember Horton put the full amount in there, but sort of mindful that things like this could take a while, because creating patterns, architectural plans and those take a while. Just funding at half the requested amount to sort of get started on it and see how far we could get on that in a year and see if there are surplus funds or next budget year, what might be needed to add to it to keep going.
Thank you, Council Lady. Did anyone else want to speak to that? Council Lady Evans?
I guess I just really had a question. We're not talking about funding sources, so never mind. I'll, I'll reserve my question for later.
Thank you. We will be discussing funding sources on Wednesday. We'll be discussing funding sources on Wednesday. So if you all could politely hold your horses, I'm sure we'll have lots of good conversation about that. All right, seeing nothing additional, and my apologies, you all had to relocate so that I can get a little juice over here from my laptop. So we will be moving on. The next item that we have is for the Police Department, starting with Council Lady Evans, $20,000 for the MMPD Substance Overdose Response for One Box. We also had $2,000 for Councilmember Harrell for the opioid overdose kids, so that's also for the One Box. And those are the only two requests for that. We already discussed this, but go ahead. Yes.
So can, you know, we had the conversation yesterday about Beer Board versus MMPD, kind of related to the One Boxes. And I wanted to know from accounting, Mr. McDonough, if you, I know that Mr. McDonough had gotten an email saying, oh, you're, that, that would have to go through the grant process from somebody in finance. He got an email saying that. And I don't know what, what grant process the person would have been referring to, but did you have any insight?
I don't.
Okay.
So yeah, I got an email about $20,000.
Yeah, about $20,000 that they would have to go through a grant process.
Oh, so they received it?
No, they just got, the director just got an email based on the conversation about One Boxes and the $20,000 that they would have to go through a grant process. And I didn't know what the context was, and he didn't really either. And I said, I'll, I'll ask. But I can forward you, have him forward you maybe the email that he got?
Yeah, that, yeah. If they've received any donation, outside of donation, the plan, people have had the little original process, but I don't know the context of like $20,000, so.
Okay. I'll have him. I'll have him forward it to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I don't know if there's any, if there is any strong feelings about if that $20,000 for the overdose kids would be better served under Beer Board or MMPD or the Health Department. I know right now the person that is doing the work is in MMPD and he's kind of carrying this on his back. There was a very extensive conversation in public health and safety that this will be more appropriate under Health. We also want to make sure that we're funding it to the entity that's doing the work. So I did just want to throw that out there with regards to see if there are any strong feelings about where that program would live. So Council Lady Evans and then Councilwoman Sepulveda.
So that program in particular, I would say no to Metro Health because they're not operating anything that boots on the ground. And the, I think the urgency with that particular program means it needs to go into the either department where they are actually taking action and it's not going to be kind of a pass-through challenge or there be any additional bureaucracy. And so that's my perspective, either MMPD or Beer Board, but not Health.
Thank you. Council Lady Sepulveda, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, that pretty much answered my question. So Beer Board and MMPD are the two entities that are currently distributing. I guess my question is who's more hands-on in the process at the moment?
So Sergeant Hots and Benton McDonough are the two most hands-on. I would look at Benton McDonough as the, he's like the order taker, like, he's going out and he's helping get socialized across all these different businesses. And then Sergeant Hots is the executor. He's installing, you know, he's kind of bringing it and actually placing that box.
But with that being the case, since Beer Board is at the very top of it, I would prefer to go there than it just be trickled down.
Same.
Same.
Any other comments on that, y'all?
I'll just say, I was at the downtown merchants meeting today and they were both there, saying what a great thing it was, but Mr. Hots, Sergeant Hots was the one at the front of the room saying, this is really important, call me and I will come hang it up in your building. So he's definitely pushing it. And he was excited to know that we're talking about trying to get another hundred out there.
Yes. Anyone that did not get the opportunity to watch our public health and safety meeting for the last council meeting, please go back and watch it. Obviously, this is on YouTube, but there was an extensive presentation on the One Boxes. So please note that you could watch it. Also, to Councilmembers Allen Spain and Evan Segal, just a heads up, it is really hard for me to see you all from the angle in which I'm sitting, so just wave if I miss you. All right, so that was the MMPD request. We have one more, two more requests. One from Councilmember Ewing, $500,000 alternative police response, funding to retain at least a portion of this program, which helps free up personnel to be more present in the community and to respond to more serious crimes. Did anyone have any information about Council Lady Ewing's request? Council Lady Voe?
Thank you, Chair. I think that this one is where with the alternative police response, they would then work with former, like, MMPD employees who are either retired, and then they would come in and, like, do clerical work. So then it would free up personnel to be in the communities. Councilmember Ewing can confirm, but that is what my understanding was.
Thank you so much. Did anyone else want to speak to this? All right, seeing none, the next request is for Councilmember Sorora, $144,800, and that is to the MMPD Child Care Center. Did anyone want to speak to that?
I just, what is it?
Yeah.
So during the budget hearing, MMPD came, one of the things that they talked about was needing a childcare center when officers are having to, my understanding is when officers are working, like, overnight shifts or if they're having to, like, leave in the night to go address a situation, if they don't have childcare, then that would provide them with childcare to be able to get out and address a situation. Council Lady Evans has given me a hint, not.
Yeah, that's what I remember as well. It's like that, it was because of the overnight employee scheduling requirements that that was posing a problem with, I don't know about attracting, but like retention and those kinds of things. Like, other industries have childcare issues for overnight workers.
I would assume potentially other departments have the same issue. Is codes going out longer now? Like, I don't want to, I don't want to keep it to one department. If we're going to do something like this, it should be available to all our metro employees.
That was my exact thought, Council Lady Sepulveda, was that if we're going to open some type of overnight childcare for metro employees, I would love to see any metro employees being able to utilize that service if they are working overnight shifts. I think that the police department may be the ones that are working more frequently because they're always going to have somebody on an overnight shift. I think water is more like if there's like an emergency, but I do think that if we have it, it should be available for all metro employees. That's kind of what my thought was. Did you have your hand up? Council Lady Tooms, Council Lady Evan Segal, Council Lady Evans, Council Lady Voe.
So I wasn't sure during the budget presentation if they already had, like, a space and, like, had it all planned out, how they would roll out this daycare. I think anytime we have an opportunity to offer childcare to metro employees, we should. I do agree with the sentiment of having it open to all employees, but if it's like a, if we're rolling it out and we could start with MMPD and their third shift employees, I think that's better than nothing. If funds are available, I would want to do something to help third shift overnight employees.
I think it would also be helpful to get an idea of, like, the number of people that this would actually impact.
Yeah.
And I'm choosing my words very carefully because I don't want to sound biased, but in many homes, well, I don't want to, anyway, I wonder how many people are actually being impacted by needing childcare to go out to work overnight? And if the number is small enough, could this be some type of, like, stipend, like, through the department to help offset the cost of a sitter or something? Like, is it enough people to actually rise to the need of actual childcare facility? So I think that's something that we definitely need more information about. Council Lady Voe and Council Lady, I'm sorry, I skipped you, right? Evan Segal, Voe, and then Evans.
Yeah, I think you covered a lot of it. I mean, I think, this is a really small amount of money to actually open up a daycare, and so I would question, like, how many kids are actually going to even be able to be there for this amount of money? Yeah. And like, at some point, the overhead for daycare, like, you have to have a certain number of kids for it to make financial sense to run at scale, and it's just a lot of questions.
Yes, please. Is this like a drop-in service or?
I think the concept was bringing in someone who was going to set the plan and strategy and manage it. And so the thought was, I think there's everything from talking to providers out there already who provide childcare, would they be willing to be open 24/7 at various points in time and take, you know, so I think there's both a needs assessment and then an execution of a plan against that. And this is a person who exists as a coordinator role to help those things get facilitated. And it probably could be scaled. There are some unique things about the police where, like, an emergency happens, they have to, they get held over on their shift, for example. So you need a model that allows for some of those very unique things that occur to them, that we have to break down. It's probably easier to scale it back for other departments that have their shift.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would think that fire and EMT personnel have the same issue, water too, if they're out, they're out, they're fixing the line until they're fixing it. And if we're going to study it, it seems like we should maybe, if we're already studying, having a childcare study funded, should it not be a part of that childcare study so that we have a more holistic approach?
I would know that they were invited to participate in that other childcare study, created if they could be. And what I'd also add is, again, there's some very unique needs that are associated with them. Not that those can't be, the solution that they come up with is probably easier to ramp down for others than to go vice versa. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady Voe, and then Council Lady Evans.
Yeah, that was my comment I was going to add since we were already doing a study. And now that it was clarified, this is not for the childcare center.
We are, and it's a proposal for a childcare study.
Well, for a person who would be on point for childcare within MMPD, needs assessment, coordination, ultimately relationships with other daycare providers, et cetera, and designing and implementing a solution.
To Council Lady Evan Segal's point of us already doing a childcare study and can we roll it in, I just wanted to be clear that right now we only have a proposal for a countywide childcare study that has not yet been funded in the budget.
Oh, yes.
So just, so we just need to keep that in mind. I don't want it to seem as though that's already funded in the budget because it's not yet. Okay, Council Lady Voe?
Sorry about, sorry about that, Chair. I was not trying to say anything.
No, no, you're okay.
But I also think it's really important to clarify then this is actually for FTE, like, for the position. So it's not, you know, I think that's important for clarity, it's not the childcare center, it's to hire someone in the request.
Well, I guess, I think, I'm sorry, I'm not recognizing.
Go ahead, Council Lady.
To that point, I guess I would want to be, I want to understand more, I guess, about MMPD's objectives, because if it's, if partially the responsibility would be for the assessment piece, then why couldn't it be rolled under United Way if that were funded? Would United Way be willing to incorporate kind of that specific review of, like, the unique issues around metro government employees as part of what they're doing? So I guess I would need more information.
I think that's an excellent point, and we can try to get more information. Whoever is the point for the United Way study, we can see if we can get this rolled into that for metro employees.
And, sorry, seriously, I don't know as well about the United Way study, but I think when, I think when I've heard MMPD speak about the assessment of the need, it's literally like, these precincts need this type of.
So it's kind of like a workforce person, like, who's coordinating scheduling and stuff like that.
And setting, and setting a strategy overall for it, right? Like, do we need to have a space or a facility that we repurpose for this and ultimately, you know, build out something? Or do we need to, if it's distributed across the entire county, do we need to, again, look at certain kinds of providers? Do we need to think about a stipend? How do we enroll people? What do you, what qualifies you to be in this? I think there's, I think the whole program design, maybe is a better way to say it. And I think the need piece of it is informed by some fairly, I call it tactical information, maybe, if that's helpful.
I guess it is. I guess then I'm going to be Councilmember Kimbrough today. Because then I think, well, could their HR, is there anybody in their HR that could do some of that initial legwork on the front end that could assess some of that stuff? I don't know from the, like, I don't know how we look at that, that aspect of people's employment. You know, like, sometimes companies have HR employees that are looking at, like, that as a benefit and, you know, the potential of that as a benefit. Is there anybody internally that could already look at some of that as kind of the front end piece to lead into these other?
These would probably be great questions to put into the department, but what I would say is, is I know that this has been something that's been on their priority budget request list, it's black a couple of years. I think if there isn't easy left on that there.
They would have done it. Okay.
All right, thank you so much, Council Lady Kimbrough.
Early you said you may make a consideration about me.
I will make a consideration about you. Just don't tell the other Joy. All right, go ahead, Council Lady. She has to, Council Lady Kimbrough has to lead, so I'm going to let her do a very brief of.
Very brief.
Lead for her, for her item.
Okay. This is something on the very last page and it has to do with the nonprofits that I put on there, and it is the, we're asking for $50,000, and it's for the Bordeaux Hills Disaster Relief Fund. It's already in existence, they've already done some really, really, really good work. And I wanted to give, just a tiny bit of background, I think at one point it had District One as the oldest voting population. We have a lot of older people in our district. And it's, you know, it's also the largest district. And a lot of these people, a lot of the seniors in our district are on a fixed income. This would allow us to allocate, which they're doing anyway, but it's mainly in a certain section, it would allow it to go district-wide. They'd kind of focus on Bordeaux Hills, but this would allow it for even Jolton, White's Creek, the other areas, Scottsboro, the other areas we have as well. But it allows the seniors to age in place. They would receive help, like, with a property violations compliance, and would also minimize their risk of being gentrified. This would help them with things like fixing gutters, installing ramps, placing roof trains and replacing the house numbers on the home. It would also be able to allow us to go in and put, like, grab bars in, widening doorways, install the taller commodes, things that seniors need that they just don't get. And we've even been getting some extra, what I do cause lately because of the widening of Clarksville highways, it has its own set of problems, mainly a lot of problems from potholes. I had a lady call me today, and I will not say her name, she knows who she is, and she's a little bit older, and she's been having a hard time trying to have her wheel replaced from hitting a pothole. And so she's tried, I put her in touch with Representative Dixie, and so she's really trying, but sometimes it's just hard when you're old or having to call here, call there, call there, then call here. And we're just asking for this money to be able to help them. Okay, that's what I was going to say. And while I'm here, one more little thing on the other one, the incident defense, somebody's probably going to speak on that, though. But let me just tell you, that is a wonderful program. That is a wonderful program. It is, that's the IDEA, I-D-E-A, that's headed by former public defender Don Dina and attorney Jody Bell, both excellent attorneys. And this will allow an alternative to, well, I'm sorry, authorize the public defender's office will conflict out for people who can't afford an attorney, they just cannot take you because either they've represented your co-defendant in the past or something like that, and they can't represent you even though otherwise you would qualify for their help, their assistance. So what the court would do is appoint a private attorney to help you. Now, that private attorney has to be willing to take the appointment, but there are limits to how much that attorney can get. So sometimes you might not get the representation you would want otherwise. What they're doing is having something, an alternative with very qualified attorneys who are willing to work at a certain rate to represent these people. It's something that's really been needed. The judges would tell you, they even have a hard time finding attorneys to take cases. Sometimes they're begging, you have people coming in, I don't want this attorney, I don't want, you're just almost forced to take whoever you get because the pickings are slim. So this is a much-needed program, a much-needed program. So I just wanted to say that.
What do you think?
It's for any crime.
Oh, I'll talk about.
Any accusation, any, people accuse of crimes, we don't know that.
Yeah, accused.
Just accused of crimes. But yes, that's an excellent program. And I don't, I thought they needed more than the 880, if you want to consider that. But 880, $880,000 on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And for everyone else, we will get to that, we'll get to nonprofits if anyone else wants to speak on it. I do have one question, though, Council Lady, the Bordeaux Hills Disaster Relief Fund, is there a way to expand it to be countywide if we're able to put money in it so that they can help people countywide, or do they only?
That would be so nice.
Okay, so.
That would be so nice.
Does the, does the nonprofit?
That was so nice.
Only supports Bordeaux and Jolton, or can they support anybody across the county?
Well, it just started with Bordeaux, and I don't know if that was from the tornado or, it was one of those natural disasters. It started there, and that was the focus because they really needed, you know, a lot of elderly people over there. But I'm asking, let's, because I'm District One, I didn't really think about, but I said, let's spread it out because, you know, we have them all the way to Jolton, you know, we need them, we all need it. So, you know, we talked, and that is something viable, something we can do. We did need some funding or whatever, and, but yes, I would love it. Yes, that would be great. Yes, everything's possible.
Thank you, Council Lady Kimbrough.
Thank you so much.
We will come back to those nonprofit items, y'all. So now we're on the public defender, starting on page 17. We have $951,300 for public defender FTEs or salary adjustments, and that is from the Minority Caucus and Councilmember Tooms. Council Lady Evans has a part of it for $341,300, and Council Lady Suora has part of it for $440,000. So Council Lady Tooms, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, so the public defender's office was audited and they had a couple of findings. One dealt with how they maintain their. One dealt with how they maintain their data and then the other one was their caseload. Their attorneys are simply overworked. They don't control their caseload because they're taking the cases that are coming into the system. Um, and so the Public Defender is needing to hire additional attorneys to handle those more violent, uh, cases, more serious criminal cases. Um, also, they're losing really good attorneys because they're overworked, burnt out, and underpaid. And so she's wanting to increase the pay of her more senior attorneys so that they stay. And you really want the best and the brightest to be in the Public Defender's Office and you have to pay for the best and the brightest because someone's gonna poach them, especially if they're burnt out. Uh, and so, so that she can get those additional FTEs so that she can pay her, uh, attorneys a comparable, uh, salary. And there's also the, I think a couple of years ago, we gave the DA's office more money so that they could readjust their salaries. And so now the DA's office is far outpacing the salaries of the Public Defender. So it's like, you know, why be a public defender when you can go to the DA's office and make more money? Uh, and again, that's a loss for the Public Defender, for the people that they serve when they're losing good attorneys. So I'd ask for my colleagues to support their request.
Thank you, Council Lady Toons. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Council Lady Webb and then Council Lady Spain, Councilmember Spain, excuse me.
Yeah, didn't they do a study and the pay was way behind what it, what it should be? That was the lady that came and spoke, right?
Yep, Markeisha Johnson, yes.
Okay, yeah. I support that.
Thank you. Councilmember Spain?
Thank you. So they said during their budget hearing that they needed, was it six hundred eighty-three thousand to address the, the funding disparity for the mid and senior level attorneys? And then they needed another seven attorneys to get the caseloads to a target level. So if we take that six eighty-three and the nine fifty-one, that doesn't leave much for seven FTEs. I just wonder what exactly we're funding with that?
Uh, six eighty-two, six to provide funding for salary allocations for assistant public defenders. Uh, offer, so allows them to offer competitive salaries to their mid to senior level attorneys. Forty-three thousand to fund increases in their office-based lease agreements. Uh, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred to provide additional staff that will help us address the serious felony workload. And I have that as two FTEs. In a, in earlier question, it says two, uh, yeah, for fiscal year twenty-four, we requested two hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred of that for two positions to address workload and sixty-two hundred for data circuit installation. We received one hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred, which added one FTE, um, for an assistant defender and paid for the data circuit installation. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, we requested nine hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred to fund salary allocations for assistant public defenders. Our rent increase, a position to address workloads and cloud-based storage.
So it's just one position?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then.
So Councilmember Spain, what you were referencing, um, uh, Defender Johnson says she needed seven positions to be in compliance. But I believe the request was made for a lower amount with the understanding that we may not have the funding to get to all seven positions. But ideally, that is something first to keep in mind. They actually need seven positions in order to be in compliance.
Gotcha, thank you.
Did anyone else want to speak to this? Uh, Council Lady, uh, Evan Segal.
Um, I was just gonna say that I support this. I, you know, it, it's really shocking how little we pay not just public defenders, but criminal defense attorneys generally in Tennessee. I know a lot of people probably follow this, but, so when we moved back from Alabama, fourteen years ago, Alabama was paying twice the rate that Tennessee was paying. You, I, I mean, it, it is almost impossible to keep the lights on and to pay your student loan bills and meet an attorney and fend people in the state of Tennessee today. And so we need to be able to put as much support behind this as we can. I mean, it was for, it's been forty-five dollars an hour, remember? And I think it, have they?
Now it's sixty.
Now it's sixty. So, which is still thirty dollars less an hour than Alabama paid twelve years ago and Alabama had almost triple the maximum limits per caseload. Which really says something about our justice system.
Did anyone else, Council Lady Bo?
Yes, I just want to add that I support this as well.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify that, you know, they're making a rent request. Um, their rent is actually covered in the admin account. Um, they moved it to a new space, uh, in addition to a couple of departments. So in the admin rent account, the rent account that is identified, um, that's where their, their, their rent is.
Okay. Thank you so much for sharing that. Council Lady Evans?
I think the, um, only reason why my amount was smaller was just thinking about the salary, um, piece of it. Um, but I would support whatever we can do.
Thank you. Uh, I do think that this would be a good time to talk about the indigent care that Council Lady, um, Kimbrough was speaking about and that is the request for eight hundred eighty thousand dollars. Um, and, and again, we'll get to the nonprofit session, but, section, but because these are so closely together, in essence, the individuals that the Public Defender's Office are not able to, um, represent because either the, too big of a workload or there is a conflict and they need someone else to represent them. This is going to help supplement, uh, those individuals so that, uh, the, uh, the legal defense for those individuals. So would anybody like to speak to that?
I actually have a question.
Uh-huh. Go ahead.
Oh, um, I, some people have question marks about this, where it goes. Someone says, "Public defender." Where would be the appropriate place to put that appropriation?
Uh, that would be a question for finance, maybe. We may have to get, we would need to figure out if that's going to the Public Defender's Office and then the Public Defender then does it as like a pass-through to the, to the entity that's providing the service, but that might be a better question for finance.
Yeah, um, I think we need some more information. I mean, you can probably put it in an admin account and do a contract with them or, or, but, you know, probably help put it in a pastor. There's multiple options of funding.
Okay.
So one thing I would volunteer is, again, with departments, just make sure you're aligned with the Public Defender, if you're going to put it into her account. Because if she has other needs, she may feel that it's better to utilize it for those other needs first as priority, which I think she spoke to in that meeting.
Yeah, she did.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, yeah, you know, it's one of those kind of things, talk about going to the department and she's very clear that if, you know, we got eight, eight hundred eighty thousand sitting around, that she would find a different use than the use of the IDEA.
Yeah. And for anybody that missed that presentation, in, in essence, they are doing a similar service. So it's, do we fund who we have in-house first? Or do we fund the nonprofit that is offering a similar service? So she was very clear that she is supportive of it. She also has her own set of needs. So that is something that we should be cognizant of. Like if it comes down to having to choose one over the other, that one is actually in-house and one is, um, essentially outsourced, I hate to say it that way. Um, Council Lady Toons?
Oh, I just want to talk a, a little bit more about the program. It does, um, they're planning to initially start off covering the serious felonies. Um, they're also going to be actually paying a decent rate, a hundred twenty-five dollars an hour. Uh, again, when you're dealing with these types of cases, you want the best and the brightest on these cases and you have to pay the best and the brightest. Um, so, you know, unlike our regular indigent system where they're getting sixty dollars, I think for capital case, you get a, I think you get like eighty dollars, something. It's low and it's capped how much you can get, make. Uh, and so I think this is a really good opportunity, if we have the funding, to provide additional support for our criminal legal system and the people who fall into it and, and need representation.
Thank you so very much. Did anyone else want to speak to this? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to schools. We are still on page seventeen. We have one more hour, uh, left in this session. So thank you all so much for, uh, your willingness to keep it rolling here. Um, the first request is for eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, this is for the school board raises and the study training, we've already discussed that. So we'll skip that item. Um, that, we have that for Minority Caucus, for Councilmember Toons, Councilmember Evans, Councilmember Horell, Councilmember Swor, Councilmember Welsh, and various members of the Women's Caucus. Uh, again, since that was already discussed, we will move on. The next request is, uh, Councilwoman Weiner. This is the janitorial hourly compensation increase and that is four million dollars. Uh, would anyone like to speak to that? And if not, I can speak to it. Okay, so in essence, um, uh, many, many, many moons ago, um, our janitorial services were outsourced and, um, we've got lots of, um, well, anyway, um, our janitorial services have been outsourced and the pay for the individuals that are providing the janitorial services is very low. Um, so we were reached out to, um, to see, uh, we were reached out to by the lobbyist that, um, represents the janitorial service to see if they could increase the hourly wages of the individuals that are, um, basically providing this service for our schools. Um, so did anyone want to speak on that or have anything to say about that? Okay, uh, let's go, Vo, let's go, you want her to go next? Vo, Evan Segal, and then Webb.
Uh, Lady Chair, can you just, what is the four million dollars? Like, that's how much the study would cost?
Uh, it's not a study, it's to actually increase their pay. Let me, let me read to you the, uh, message that I got about it. Um, mm. All right, the, um, the, one of the companies, sorry, okay. Um, this is to increase the pay for the custodians and trying to get them closer to a living wage. And, uh, according to the information I received, um, they currently are getting probably less than seventy percent of what would be considered a living wage in our city. Um, in the bigger scheme of things, this could be corrected with three point seven five million dollars in the school's operating budget to get them closer to a living wage. Um, and then the other message that I received was that, um, every dollar that we can add to this this year will go directly to paying those employees. So that is the information that, um, again, came to me from, uh, from their lobbyist.
Okay, so just to be clear, the four million would be to pay the janitorial services to close this seventy, this gap of a living wage?
To increase their pay.
Right, to increase their pay. But we outsourced it so the contractor actually hires the individuals, correct?
It's outsourced. So the school has a contract with a janitorial service. So this is giving more money to the schools to pay more money for the janitorial service. So the janitorial ser, it's increasing their contracts so they can pay their employees more.
Okay, versus the company just paying their employees more?
So I.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
That I'm understanding correctly.
Yes, and I'm not advocating for or against, I'm just explaining my understanding of it. It is my understanding that they want to increase the contract so that they can then pay individuals more. Council Lady Toons?
So the company is paying based off the money they receive from MNPS. So if MNPS pays them three hundred thousand dollars, that three hundred dollars minus what they keep in over there in the industry. They pay the employees out of that much. Like, they're not taking their entire company money and paying their employees. They're paying it from the contract that they have with MNPS. So if we want them to make more money, it's MNPS has to pay the company more money for the intern, the janitor, the janitor's gig.
Okay. Even though the company could pay their employees the living wage as well?
From what?
They're a business too, so.
Right.
I'm just trying to understand, like.
So they have a contract. You contract with me, I pay my folks based off the money that you give me. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what that is.
Sure, maybe that's one business model.
I guess the question is the profit margin?
Right.
Exactly, and then the overhead, like you were saying. So, okay, I was just trying to get a better understanding of what the funding is for.
Thank you, Council Lady Evan Segal, and then Council Lady Webb.
Yeah, I think my question is, it's like the profit they're making and is this really necessary? Especially when we're trying to get, uh, look at base rates for MNPS employees. I know that we do not have the, what is it, like sixty-five million dollars to bring these jobs back in-house or whatever crazy high number it is. But spending four million dollars for a private company to maintain its profit margin in a tight budget year seems like a lot to ask.
Thank you so much, Council Lady Webb.
Well, I was just gonna play a little bit of devil's advocate saying, hey, didn't we, didn't we bid this out? So what did they do? Bid it low and then ask us for four million to pay the employees more? I mean, I'm assuming this got bid, that we put it out for bid and they won the contract. So isn't that being sort of unfair to the people that originally bid it? That were hired and they didn't get the contract? I don't know, I don't think there's, I think there may be a lot of gray area on this one. I don't know, I just think we ought to tread lightly on this one.
Thank you. Uh, Council Lady Toons and then Council Lady Bo.
And I, I would just add that, um, janitors are not like just janitors. Like, they're, they're typically a very important part of the school. Kids love them. They're, you know, very integral. Um, so I wouldn't think of them as just, you know, some third party. But they're really very much a part of the school.
Thank you, Council Lady. Um, Council Lady Webb and Council Lady Supulva, I apologize, I didn't see her. And then I'll go to you, Council Lady Bo.
I wasn't classifying them as third party. I was talking about the third party, the business. Yes, janitors play a vital, vital role in, you know, they're the one, you know, that, all my kids' janitors, you know, were very important, especially in elementary. You know, they can really get a relationship, but to me, we're not talking about that. We're talking about how, how, how do we get their pay up? Maybe, maybe we need to insource that back to Metro. I don't know. I just think there's a lot more to talk about on that area.
Thank you. Council Lady Supulva, then Council Lady Bo.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I was at MNPS schools when they were outsourced. Um, so I remember the janitors being very much like another family member to students. I ran into a janitor, um, who I knew from elementary school at a IHOP, maybe like a year or two ago, and I still remembered them. Um, so I think outsourcing has brought us several, um, issues throughout, um, since 2010. Um, I do think that we need to consider bringing that back in-house and I think that, that is a conversation that, uh, the school board will be continuing to have throughout these next couple of years. But I, I don't know, I just, I, I would, I would like to know what the, what the profit margin is for this company. Uh, everyone deserves to make a living wage. I, I just think that we, we really need more information.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Council Lady Bo?
Thank you, Chair. And then can you tell me, um, does anyone, what, how many positions this would be? Like, how many for this, we don't know?
I don't know that I have that information, yeah. Um, I don't believe Council Lady Weiner sent any information. So, um, I was just sharing what I just happened to know about it. Um, but these are questions that we can, um, that we can get answered. It doesn't sound like there's a big appetite to support this. Um, so if someone is interested in getting more information so that we could potentially support it, then we could definitely do that. But just based on this conversation, it doesn't sound like that this is a priority.
I do want to say that I, I love janitors too. This is a question about like, you know, with what we have and who we're allocating it to and what it's for.
Yes, custodians provide a service that is so important in keeping our schools clean and, uh, keeping students safe with, you know, soap in the bathrooms and just all of those things. Like that, that is a huge, uh, that's very important to talk. This is definitely not a knock on the important work that's being done in our schools. Yes.
And I, who would we reach out to? Because it almost is like, okay, we, I think as a body, we, you know, since we know that janitors are important, that we need to know, like, how much do they, what is the average pay of the janitor in Davidson County School and stuff? Just for the fear of fact, how, how do we know that the company that we went into contract with is not mistreating the people that we think should be treated right? So I think we need to dive into that from a business standpoint since we're in a contract with them. You know, how many janitors is it? What is the average pay? You know, if they're making ten dollars an hour, then we don't probably need to be doing business with that janitor company, I don't think. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think that, um, that, uh, those are questions that we can pose to MNPS. So if you have a specific question, you can send it to Director Darby. And just so that, uh, just, I do have a little bit of part of an answer, maybe, maybe it's not. But, and this is information that I received in March, so I don't know if this is still accurate, but the information that I received at that point in time was that the wage rates are established in the contract with the, similarly with the custodians, the wage rate and the escalation that is allowed is also contained in the contract. None of these contracts had provisions that took into consideration what has happened to wages in Davidson County during and since the pandemic. So you can make more, in some cases, a lot more working at fast food restaurants than providing these important services. So I think that, from my understanding, that maybe a contract was negotiated, that there are provision for escalators, wages have gone up since the pandemic, and now these wages are not competitive wages anymore. So, again, not advocating for or against, just sharing the information that I have, so. All right, moving on, the next one we have is community education, five hundred thousand dollars for Councilmember Welsh. Does anyone have any explanation on that? Council Lady?
I haven't spoken to her directly, but I know that this is, we have, our original budget in twenty eighteen, where community education had to be cut, you know, because of our tight budget here, and so it's an interest in bringing it back.
Thank you, do, do we know if anyone has spoken to the department that would house it, if they have interest in bringing it back, if they have capacity? Council Lady Tunes?
I thought it was just moved into something else last, last fiscal year.
I thought it was moved under, I did think it was moved under, I didn't think it was moved there. Erin, do you have any information about this?
I guess I just remember some of the, like, programming kind of going, like, informally to different departments, like libraries does adult programming and that kind of thing, but you know, the original community education was housed at Cone School, and they had a lot of equipment, and of course, the community members that served as like the faculty in addition to like the executive director, and I think we had a commission, maybe, I bet you it, there was something around that that I recall.
Council Lady Tunes?
Can we find out if that was up who was running other places and those same services are being provided?
So what I have found with my internet sleuthing, according to the Nashville Community Education Commission, this was a post from 2021, and this says, earlier this spring, Mayor Cooper released a city budget which did not include funding for the Community Education Commission. This year, we did work towards creating our own independent nonprofit, however, this is not a favorable year for financial support. Community education will be closed on June 30th. I was trying to see if it had, there was something that said that they were hoping that some of this, okay, there's a possibility that program could be reintroduced through another nonprofit organization, so through A R P funding. So that is what they shared on June of 2021. So I don't have anything that's more up to date. My concern would just be, I, I think this is a great, they did many great things, and I do think that we need to figure out if these, if the program was absorbed through other departments, and if not, if this is going to come back online, where, where does it live? Does that department have capacity? Is it its own department, you know, is there capacity there to absorb this? So I think we just need some more information, more information on this. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, moving on to page eighteen. Sheriff's Office, Council Lady Sorora, automated security, two hundred thousand dollars. Anybody have any, any, any information on that? All right, seeing none. Economic Development, the Minority Caucus, Barnes Fund, five million dollars, Council Lady Tunes, five million dollars, Councilmember Horell, Councilwoman Sorora, five million dollars. Council Lady Tunes, can you speak to this?
That was because other items on the wish list were funded using the operating dollars that were allocated to Barnes Fund, and so this is just replacing those operating dollars with surplus dollars.
Thank you so very much. Would anybody like to speak to this? All right, seeing none, we will move right on ahead. Nonprofits, so we talked about the Tennessee Justice Center already yesterday, so I'm gonna skip those off, those items. We talked about the countywide childcare study, we talked about the indigent defense fund, and just for the record, I'll brief those out. So the Tennessee Justice Center was Minority Caucus voters, were, the countywide childcare study was Minority Caucus, Tunes, the indigent defense excellence advocacy was the Minority Caucus and Tunes, and then we have Councilmember Druffel, Program Coordinator to Support Youth, and this is two hundred thousand dollars through NASA. Does anyone, and that is Councilmember Druffel, does anyone have any information about that? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the next request. Evans, two hundred thousand dollars for the childcare study, we've already discussed that. Evans, five hundred thousand dollars to fund the Village Community Safety Grants through the Community Foundation. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so this is, so last term, Mayor's Office created the Office of Community Safety, and then under, and we did a variety of different things with that new stand-up department. And one of the things that we did, there was funding that was allocated for nonprofits in underserved communities that were working closest to the areas where there were significant issues with violent crime, specifically to do some of the things that we talked about earlier, as far as like diverting youth and other individuals kind of away from, you know, some of the practices that were getting them into trouble. So we, at the beginning of this term, that team was transitioned over to Metro Health, and funding was transitioned over to Metro Health. The, one of the outcomes from that process last term was something called the Village, which is essentially kind of a consortium of all these little nonprofit organizations. It may just be like one person that's running the whole thing, or maybe they have one staff member, you know, very small organizations. And the Village, the purpose of it was to get those nonprofits, help them scale, whatever that looks like for them. Maybe it's just becoming, you know, having the capacity to manage their finances better, to be able to write reports, to apply for grants, those kinds of things. So the Village ended up transitioning to the Community Foundation, and Erica Burnett is the Executive Director. So the, the people that were running the Community Safety Office, none of those folks are with Metro any longer. Metro Health has money for this initiative, the Village is with the Community Foundation. So the goal would be to continue to fund the Village, five hundred thousand dollars, but it would go to the Community Foundation ultimately, because that's where the Village lives with these nonprofits. And so it kind of goes back to what I talked about one of the days this week with the Violence Prevention Action Team activities that the Health Department has been doing around kind of pulling back, like, all these stakeholders around what is Metro's next step? Because there have been, I think, so many good initiatives that started under Mayor Cooper in this regard, that have either not fully been realized under the new administration, or they're in a, a great amount of flux. What's not in flux is the Village. The Village is still operating, just to give you an example. One of the things that was funded with some of the money from the Village was Rocket Town, was doing a program where they were getting kids from Napier to go to Rocket Town for activities, after school, all kinds of things. Well, part of the money that they used as part of this process is they had gotten a used, like, van, because, as you well know, like, walking from Napier downtown, you know, poses a certain set of challenges from a safety perspective. So Rocket Town was transporting these kids, you know, in this van, and so the van has fallen into some disrepair because it was used, it needs to be repaired, so they don't have the funding to be able to support doing it. So it's, some of the grants are around very specific programming kinds of things, and, and so that's just one example that I can think of. There are others, but the Village is kind of like the launchpad for Metro's investment in community safety.
Thank you so much, would anybody else like to speak on this? All right, seeing none. The next item we have is Rafa Institute Court Funding Fund, Community Safety, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars to Councilmember Evans. Now, it does have it broken up half and half to the General Sessions Court and half to Juvenile Court, so would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, we talked about this yesterday already with Councilmember Gamble. My, my direction, the money, bless you, was different, going to different paths, because the referrals for the youth that were, that would be involved in this work are coming from two different courts, juvenile and general sessions. And so that's why I had it split up, but we talked about the context around Rafa yesterday.
Thank you so very much, Council Lady. The next request is Council Lady Ewing, two hundred thousand dollars for the Y W C A to increase annual funding. Did anyone have any information about that? All right, seeing none. The next item is Council Lady Gad, two hundred thousand dollars for the United Way Study, we've already discussed that, and, oh, not us on the last page? All right, nonprofits. Nonprofits, we almost through, y'all. Community Safety Partnership for the Village, Councilmember Gamble, five hundred thousand dollars, Council Lady Evans just spoke to that. Indigent Care for Council Lady Kimbrough, eight hundred eighty thousand, we already spoke to that. Council Lady Kimbrough to fifty thousand for the Border Hills Disaster Relief Fund. The only thing that I wanted to add to that, and I kind of said it earlier, like, it would be great if we could figure out if that is something that, if we give money to it, if it can be something that is countywide, like typically in the budget, we're kind of looking at these like countywide approaches, so if that's something that we could look at. The next one is Councilmember Rutherford, twenty-five thousand dollars to increase funds to hold Sister Cities, even with the fiscal year twenty-four funding here. Would anyone like to speak to that? Council Lady Webb?
Hi Chair, thank you so much, yes, so Sister Cities has been a part of Metro, you know, since nineteen ninety, thirty-four years, and they really had stagnant funding. It's been like flat. And then, I want to say, two years ago, it was increased by twenty-five K, and then, which is what Councilmember Rutherford is referring to, and then this year, it was cut by twenty-five. So now it's like in between, like, it's a little higher than the flat allocation they'd always received, so this is just maintaining what they received last year. And what, what they're trying to do is, you know, they've had one and a half employees for thirty years, and they're trying to get the other staff member who does the exchanges to full-time as well, to help the Executive Director, since we have ten Sister Cities now. So I do support this request to maintain their allocation from last year.
Thank you so much, did anyone else want to speak on Sister Cities? Council Lady Tunes?
Just real briefly, and it's the same as with the Tennessee Justice Center, just wanting, I guess, in, in planning ahead, is this gonna be an every-year allocation? Because typically, when we're giving to nonprofits, it's a one-time expenditure, and so there are some, like this one, Tennessee Justice Center, that are coming every year for the same amount, so it's like we're plugging their budget every year? So just want, just wanting more information as to what their plans are to cover this long-term, or maybe we are the plan? Just wanting to know, have some clarification on that.
Thank you, Council Lady Tunes. I guess maybe we can receive, Director Darby, do you think maybe we can get some information? I think Mina Johnson may be in contact on it, and I think Sarah Lingo may be in contact, so if we could get some information, that'd be helpful.
Can I clarify? Because, because the Executive Director, some, she, some of her, like, salary is from, paid for Metro, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I think she is a Metro player. We need to confirm that or, or what it is, but I know that they can clarify, or.
She's not a, she's not a Metro player, I think that this is one of those, the, the philosophy, I think, that has been carried through, at least from an administration perspective, has been that we've been making grants to nonprofit, by the way, grants is not the right word, because I think as folks have experienced, who've been here for a while, it's a reimbursement of costs that are incurred that come through a nonprofit contract that has a scope and has a defined kind of set of deliverables through our, our template process. But in the, in the case of many nonprofits, it's been when a department aligns with the nonprofits, the nonprofit delivers on the mission of that department in some way or another. And so I believe that this has been a standing relationship for period of time with, with, with Metro, because I believe it's been almost serving as a international affairs office, if you will, function. It is a nonprofit, she's not an employee, but I do believe the allocation has gone in, in the past, and there is, there is a line item in the Mayor's Office budget for this, to, for this nonprofit already.
They already, was it reduced? Is that what it is?
It is reduced.
Okay.
From, from, from last year. Last year, I believe it's reduced to the amount that was requested by the Mayor's Office last year, it then was increased by council in the amendment for substitute process, I can't remember which one, but it ended up with an increase, and I think it's back to that original number.
Gotcha, thank you. Did anybody else want to speak to this? All right, seeing none. Council Lady Sorora with the Tennessee Justice Center, sixty thousand, we already discussed that. Indigent Care, eight hundred eighty thousand, Council Lady Sorora, we've discussed that. Council Lady Webb, eight hundred eighty thousand for indigent care, and then fifty thousand for Border Hills Disaster Relief Fund, we discussed that. Tennessee Justice Center, sixty thousand, Program Continuation, Council Lady Welsh, we've discussed that. Women's Caucus, sixty thousand, Tennessee Justice Center, we discussed that. Y M C A, increased annual grant funding due to inflation by various members of the Women's Caucus for two hundred thousand dollars. I believe that is the same request we just saw from Council Lady Ewing. Did anyone have any information on that? All right, seeing none, we will move on. The next item is Council Lady Stiles, additional funding for Sister Cities, twenty-five thousand. Council Lady Allen, Tennessee Justice Center for sixty thousand. Y M C A, two hundred thousand, grant funded from Council Lady Allen. And then lastly, Neighbor to Neighbor, fifteen thousand from Council Lady Allen. Director Darby, do you have that information? I believe Council Lady Allen said she was leaving information with you on Neighbor to Neighbor.
On Neighbor to Neighbor?
Uh huh.
I, no, I have no.
She said that she was leaving, but she, I think she emailed both of you.
Maybe she intends to send something.
Oh, okay, I just, I heard her whisper as she was leaving out that she was emailing you about Neighbor to Neighbor, so.
I have not received an email about Neighbor to Neighbor, but I will say I'm not getting every email that people slowly they've sent me since I've been in this room, so I don't know. I need to get my thoughts together.
No, there's no signal.
Well, I'll say what's on here is Neighbor to Neighbor in assisting the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods through outreach, training, and education of neighborhood leaders citywide, and that's a fifteen thousand dollar request. Would anybody like to speak to Neighbor to Neighbor?
Sure.
Council Lady Evans?
So the Neighbor to Neighbor puts on, does a lot of community programming, they have a conference for neighborhoods every year that invites residents to come and learn about how they can be more impactful in their communities, so they speak to issues about zoning and safety, you know, healthy neighborhoods, you know, kind of somewhat, Councilmember Kimbrough was speaking to about aging in place, that kind of thing. And then they also do a lot of one-on-one, I shouldn't say one-on-one, but kind of smaller group, kind of targeted training about specific issues, and then they'll go out into neighborhoods and actually work on conflict resolution in neighborhoods, and so they've been kind of around for a really long time, and fifteen thousand dollars, they, you know, I would like to see them get more, but at the same time, in a tight budget year, I get it, but they do a lot of work, I think, to help grow people who are interested in civic issues.
Thank you so very much. Would anybody else like to speak, Neighbor to Neighbor? Council Lady Tunes?
We did fund them some last year, I think maybe we gave them thirty, I think?
I think it got increased to sixty.
It got increased to sixty, okay. And I think they're not in the, the Mayor's Propose Budget at all, so that's a big funding gap for them. So if we do have the funding, I would be supportive, considering the work that they do at Councilmember Evans, explain.
Council Lady, Sepulveda?
If we do that, just constructive criticism as they move forward. For non-English speaking immigrant communities, I think there's still a big gap, and so anything we could do. Um, and so anything we could do to fill that gap, I think, would be important.
Thank you so very much. Uh, did anyone else have anything that they wanted to? Councilwoman, uh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, Director Darby?
Um, I just wanted to let you know, I, I just got a message, um, from Councilmember Druffel, who wanted me to relay, he couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, that, um, he, on his item on nonprofits, the Druffel Program Coordinator, Support Youth, he would like support for that. It's a good program.
Uh, I believe, uh, it was for youth justice work with NASA for Why We Can't Wait, supporting about 200 youth. Is, uh, with, uh, Councilmember Druffel's, um, amendment, well, not amendment, but his wishlist item is for. So that was for the amount of $200,000 through NASA. Would anybody else like to speak to Why We Can't Wait for NASA? Nope. Okay. Um, so with that, we are going to wrap up early. Can y'all believe it? We're wrapping up early, so we have now kind of gone through all the wishlist items. I just want to give everybody just a little, kind of run-in total of where we are. The items that, um, just kind of from my count seems as though they, uh, likely got the most support, we're at about $5 million for those items. The items that I felt were a little more lukewarm, there was some support, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a little shaky, we're at, um, $2.3 million there. And so that's, you know, over $7 million. And then, um, there, there are some items that did not, uh, have a lot of support. And for those items, we are at about $7.4 million. Um, so just, uh, again, an idea of just kind of where we are. Trying to keep a little running tab here. Um, when we come back for our meeting on Wednesday, we're going to start off with, uh, some information from Erin Pratt, uh, Erin Pratt, not Erin Evans. Um, as everyone has been getting them confused, y'all look just alike. So everybody's been getting y'all confused. It's budget season. Um, but Erin Pratt with Finance is going to talk to us about funding sources, because some of the funding sources that are in here are sources that we can't necessarily use. Uh, some of them, uh, some things that we have requested are things that can be funded, that we don't have to find additional funding for. So he's going to start off that conversation. And then from there, we're going to just kind of discuss some of these funding sources so that we can get an idea of where people are pretty supportive of, of possibly pulling funding. And then seeing if we could just kind of maybe tighten up, uh, where we're seeing, um, the most support for these, uh, for these items. We will not have a work session on, uh, Thursday, as we will, uh, in essence, wrap up on Wednesday. So the, the Thursday session was, was put there in case we needed it, and it looks like we will actually be done on, on Wednesday. So, um, Councilwoman Evans Segal, and then Councilwoman Evans.
Those numbers are exclusive of the school board and, um, and.
The $20 an hour?
In general, yeah, the $20 an hour.
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
And the cola, is that right?
Yes, thank you. Not include, thank you so much, I'm so sorry. Not including pay plan stuff. So not including the $7 million for the cola and not including the $9 million to get to, uh, 20. So this was just the various items that, um, that we, that we've discussed outside of that. Thank you for clarifying that. Councilwoman Evans?
Thank you. Um, I, I would like, and, uh, for Mr. Pratt, I'm not going to email you about this, but I had a conversation, um, specifically with Dr. Wright a little while ago before we started around the community safety budget line item, because there's, we have the two. There's two that's in there. One is like $3.3 million or something, and then the other one is the million. That was Cure Violence. And so could you, if you could get some clarity maybe from his finance team on that? Because I think Dr. Wright is even, just a little, there's a little uncertainty about it, I think, in the transition. Um, because Councilmember Gamble, you know, found the light item specifically for FY 2025. Um, and so we just need to understand, I guess, a little bit more about the flexibility of that, the $3. whatever million dollars.
Yeah, and I can talk about that online. So that's one of the items I definitely want to cover, special revenue fund versus things that are in administrative, administrative account currently. And then when those things get transferred, the timing of when it's available than when it's not available.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other questions? Seeing none. Uh, thank you for your time. Meeting adjourned. Woo! Erin, thank you for the candy.
Oh, my gosh. Such a, oh, straight dinner.
I have to take, um...